Founder Abraham Penn taught a valuable lesson that has been part of a tradition since 1919 when he said, "I'd rather make a friend than make a sale." For more than 90 years, Puritan has been making friends as a unique family-owned company right here in Cape Cod. At Puritan Cape Cod on 199 Main Street, as well as Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment, and much more. Puritan Cape Cod, (548) 0116, or puritancapecod.com.
Good evening. I want to -- this meeting has already been called to order because we were in executive session. We are returning from executive session, and I would invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is a proclamation, and this has been requested by the people who are working with the pancreatic cancer group, and this is Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. This is a long proclamation, but I thought maybe if you could not read it all, but maybe some certain parts of it that are relevant to the proclamation. Doug?
Sure. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth-leading cause of the cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second by 2020; whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survivor rate in the single digits at just 6 percent; whereas approximately 920 deaths will occur in Massachusetts in 2014; whereas it will be very difficult to leverage the opportunities that come out of the scientific framework developed as a result of the Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act unless sustained inadequate funding is provided to the National Institutes of Health and National Cancer Institute; and whereas federal funding for medical research is critical to job protection and creation in Massachusetts; and whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in Falmouth support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to this disease and are committed to nothing less than cure; whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Falmouth are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments, therefore be it resolved that the board of selectmen designate the month of November 2014 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in the town of Falmouth. In witness thereof, we appear to a set date in hand and cause the great seal of the foul to be fixed on this 20th day of October 2014. Mary Pat Flynn, Doug Jones, Rebecca Moffett, Susan Moran, and Samuel Patterson. So moved.
Doug, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. And thank you very much to the Pancreatic Cancer Group for doing that. I think we all remember, one of the best-loved people in Falmouth that all of us remember is Peter Kerwin. He was the director of our Department of Human Services for many, many years, and he died several years ago of pancreatic cancer. So we know. Yes, Sam?
I thought of him, and I immediately thought of four other people who are citizens of Falmouth who were great citizens and contributors to the community, not just simply living here, that have died of pancreatic cancer over the last six to eight years. It's one of those diseases, it comes and works, it's, you know, it's a terrible result quickly, and it doesn't discriminate on the value of that person in the community, for sure.
That's very true. Okay, public comment. Is there anyone who would care to speak under public comment on any matter not on the agenda? Do you think our meetings are getting boring, that hardly anybody's here tonight? Okay, next to the minutes of October 6th, 2014, the public session.
I would move approval of October 6th, 2014 minutes as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. The motion carries. And the second set of minutes are the executive session of October 6th, 2014.
Just checking whether any of these can be released. I don't think we can yet, though. I would move the minutes of October 6th, 2014, executive session, and vote to not release.
Second. Any discussion? Obviously not. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. I might suggest that maybe we, at our next meeting, we get a review of some of the more recent executive session minutes and see which ones we can release. I think it's about time to do that. Okay, under the summary of actions, the first, we have six items, and the first three relate specifically to the request for change of Sunday hours, which is now allowed and where the package stores can open at 10 o'clock. And there are three package stores that request this. One is the Windfall on Scranton Avenue. The second is RJ's Variety and Liquors on 174 Sandwich Road in East Falmouth. And the third is the Family Foods at 250 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of the request, but also point out that all they need to do is notify us of the request. By the new law, they are entitled to do so, and as long as we basically accept the request. So I would move approval of that.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. The motion carries. The next is to approve a request to extend a seasonal all-alcoholic club license until January 15th, 2015, by the Falmouth Yacht Club at 290 Clinton Avenue, Falmouth.
I would move approval of extending the season until January 15th, 2015.
Is there a second? Second, okay. Becky?
I just wanted to, if there was anyone here, is the Falmouth Yacht Club remaining open continuously from now until the 15th? Is that as we're looking for this?
Yes, that's why they're asking. They do this every year.
It's not just periodic.
Because of the holidays, they like to go through past New Year's and...
Okay.
And typically seasonal licenses only go till November 30th, and they need be approved to extend it if they want it to be on that right now.
Right. So some do for various reasons, not very many, but the yacht club usually does. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. The motion carries. The next is the request to extend the seasonal all-alcoholic common victual license until January 2nd, 2015, the Landfall Restaurant at Tuluscom Avenue, Woods Hole.
I have one question, maybe Chief Dunn, who's in the audience, could... Last year, we had some issues with complaints about noise. I have not heard of any issues this year with any complaints officially to the board or to the police about noise. Do you happen to know if there have been any?
I think there've been some complaints, however, that have been unfounded when the police have arrived.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I would move approval of the extension of the Landfall Restaurant to January 2nd, 2015.
Second. Sam?
Madam Chair, I'd like to disclose that through my scouting involvement, I've been very close to the Jim Astis family, but I'm not related in employment or through any family relationship.
Okay. Becky?
All right, it's my very same question, because I think of the Landfall as closing sometime in November. So they're staying open also?
Right, until January 2nd.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, can I just interject?
Sure.
The comment we just received from Chief Dunn regarding a complaint about...
A noise complaint.
A noise complaint that was explored by the police department on a couple occasions that I recall. Those are both related to the entertainment license as opposed to the all-alcoholic victual license. I just want to distinguish those. That is a license, of course, which the board does separately review, as you'll recall, and, you know, I would anticipate if there would be a concern regarding that entertainment license, it would be raised at that particular time. So I just wanted to distinguish between those. Talking about the same establishment, but two separate licenses, and I thought it would be helpful to clarify that.
That's good. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. The motion carries. And the last request is for a special one-day liquor license for a concert fundraiser at the Woods Hole Library at 581 Woods Hole Road in Woods Hole.
This is for Saturday, October 25th, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Should it say Saturday?
Yes, Saturday, October 25th, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
I move approval of the one-day liquor license for the Woods Hole Public Library.
No. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. The motion carries. We'll move to administrative orders, and the first is to approve N-Star's petition to install one four-inch underground conduit and one handhold hole at 77 Borns Pond Road in Falmouth. There has, a public hearing was held on October 9th, 2014, on this petition, and the recommendation is to approve the request as submitted.
Madam Chair, I do have a question, and this is not relevant to this particular issue, but it's a question I keep asking on the timetable of N-Star following through with the approval of the improvements on Surf Drive that they had promised would be done by May of this year. Any idea on their timetable?
Excellent question, Selectman. The most recent representation I had had was that the project was anticipated to begin yet this fall. I do not have an exact time, but I will seek one and bring it back to the board if I may.
I'm fairly certain the Conservation Commission has approved the plan that they're...
That's my understanding as well.
May I ask a question on this?
Sam?
On this work? Does this involve actually trenching, or do they use one of those moles to feed a conduit under the ground without having to open up the road surfaces?
These requests...
I looked through it, and I couldn't see what the...
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't really say.
Yeah, okay.
It probably came up during the public hearing, though. We don't do the public hearings anymore. We defer them to the engineering department, and then we then take their recommendation.
That's good enough for me. Thank you.
I would move approval of the...
Wait, did we take a vote? Yes. No, not yet. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. Now, we have a second request here. Again, there was a public hearing on October 9th, 2014, and this is the petition of N-Star to install one four-inch underground conduit on Gifford Street, south of Dirt Road, Falmouth.
I would move approval of the petition to install one underground conduit at Gifford Street, south of Dirt Road.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed? Unanimous. The motion carries. The next item is to accept a donation from the Falmouth Road Race to the Falmouth Recreation Department in the amount of $5,000. Does anybody have any questions?
I do note that it's for road, for asphalt work that was done at the Sandwich Road Athletic Field Complex, is that right?
That's correct.
No.
No? It's no?
I'm sorry, no.
Okay, go ahead.
The expenditure, which is the next item, is...
Oh, it's an expenditure.
This is a receipt. Oh, I'm talking ahead. Yes, for a donation, and it says on the material that it will be used for...
This is the Jimmy Gayhen Charitable Foundation, and they make these donations periodically to the Recreation Department. So that is the source of the donation. And then the next item is the expenditure of the donation, which is work that will be done at the Sandwich Road Athletic Field Complex. But it's all in the same package here. You have the, we have the request to accept the donation, which, under our policies, any donation over $500, the board of selectmen has to accept, and then any expenditure over $500, the board has to approve. So this is, go ahead.
There's actually two separate unrelated transactions.
The $5,000 from the road race has nothing to do with the Sandwich Field, if that's correct.
Right, that's correct.
And that is not the...
That's why they're listed separately.
Yep.
We're accepting the donation from the Falmouth Road Race to the Recreation Department in the amount of $5,000. That's one single transaction.
And that's specifically for using for special family events and field trips for the Recreation Department.
Exactly.
I would move approval of the acceptance of $5,000 from the Falmouth Road Race.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. And then the next one is to approve the expenditure from the Recreation Department donation account in the amount of $17,070 for work done at the Sandwich Road Athletic Field Complex.
I move approval. Second?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. The motion carries. The next is to approve a request to submit a grant application for FY15, the Mass Environmental Trust Grant, for dam removal and habitat restoration on the Kunemesset River. And I think we have a brief summary here of the intent, and this is really to approve the request for the grant, not to approve the grant. Becky?
I didn't know if there was anyone here. I wanted an explanation.
Betsy Gladfelter is here.
Hi, Betsy Gladfelter. I'm working with the Conservation Commission.
Thank you. An explanation?
Working with them.
With them.
You want an explanation?
An explanation of, describe the dam.
Describe the dam? The Card Dam was an earthenware dam at the lower part of Lower Bog, which is being, is in the process of being restored, and this will allow a free-flowing river, an additional quarter mile of free-flowing river, and improved river habitat.
Okay, so it's just earth and dirt?
Earth and dirt, and there are some millstones, granite millstones, that will remain on site, that will be used for an amphitheater, for an educational amphitheater on site.
I immediately saw the beavers.
Oh, beavers, no, no, this is not a beaver dam.
Okay.
This is, but while I'm up here...
Yes.
While I'm up here, I'm going to take the opportunity to say, this is, many of you have seen this, you feel like this is sort of a broken record, but we actually have gotten 33% of the grants we've applied for. And we had a meeting on Friday with the river restoration engineer who has prepared 75% plans for this work. So we have the plans in hand, and we'll have a public meeting on December 17th. The Conservation Commission will have a public meeting, and Nick will explain the plans for this site and also show some pictures for some recent rivers in the area that have been restored, just to give people a sense of what the process will be. And the second thing I want to tell you, the second good piece of news, piece of good news, is Steve Hurley, who works for the Mass Fish and Wildlife, and he's part of our advisory board. Steve couldn't come to the meeting, but he said he wanted to send me some good news and send a report. And Steve works with trout, we have a trout person, and then we have a, Brad Chase is our herring person. But Steve has been working on the river probably longer than anybody else, over 25 years, and he successfully reestablished Brook Trout in the upper part of the river, above Sandwich Road. And, you know, one of our hopes is to install trout, I mean, to reintroduce trout in the entire river and to reintroduce a salted trout population, the ones that'll actually go out into the saltwater. So things are moving...
Yes, that's good news.
...at a glacial pace, but...
I think just to remind, our plan all along has been that Lower Bog would not be reinstated as a cranberry bog, but we'd be restoring the river as part of the compromise in the whole, bogs or no bogs. The Lower Bog was a restoration of that river, as opposed to becoming, restoring it as a cranberry bog.
Correct.
Sam?
I have a question about the date that this human here says activities will begin in January 2014. Have they, are you suggesting that's already beginning, or should that be 2015 relative to this?
Oh, this is the letter you're reading?
Yeah.
It should be 2015. This is permitting activities? See, I...
It's a letter to the Massachusetts Environmental Trust.
Right, which hasn't been sent yet. That's, I'm asking permission to send it, but...
And that's why it has no date on it as well. No, I understand.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
No, but if it's, the sentence about permitting, that'll begin in 2015.
It does say permitting for these activities will begin, you're right.
Well, you're right. I have to change it.
Okay.
It's 2015. Yeah. You can't begin permitting until you have 75% engineering plan. And then the permitting itself is about anywhere from... And then the permitting itself is about anywhere from a six to nine, ten, eleven-month process. And I, and I might also say, let me just give two other plugs. One is the Massachusetts Division of Ecological Restoration is, has been contributing around twenty thousand a year to this project, and will be paying for all the permitting and the, the final hundred percent plans. We're, we're a priority river. And the other group that I have to give a plug to is, is the Massachusetts Environmental Trust that were applying for this grant. But our plans were done under the first grant. Remember when, those of you who were here, when Julian brought in the big check? Well, we spent most of the money on the big check of these plans. But they want people to know that their money comes from the trout, the whale tail, and the, and the watermill license plates. So if you want to contribute to this, think about getting one of those license plates. I always have to tell Bill Hinckley, oh, no, when I get a chance, I mention the license plates.
And it isn't until acceptance of this grant, we would ask the question, and what are the future costs that could be associated with going forward with this?
Well, I can tell you that, that currently, money has to be spent for, for dredging sand out of that part of the river that will not be. So that'll be, so I can give you a negative future cost.
Great. If I asked me to, I would move a, or authorize the submission of this grant application for fiscal year fifteen Mass Environmental Trust Grant.
Second?
Second. Any further, any further discussion?
With the change of January two thousand fourteen to June, January two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, that's great.
There's some other type, though, you might want to take care of.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous, the motion carries. The next item is to approve the creation of a treasurer-collector position, grade nine. Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the, as the board is aware, the general directive to me as town manager is to explore and pursue reasonable administrative consolidations where such opportunities arise. And as the board is further aware, we do have a vacancy currently in the town treasurer position, which affords us the ability to initiate a discussion about the possibility of considering a consolidated treasurer-collector position. And pursuant to that, members of the board have a copy of a draft job description for a, such a consolidation. And I currently am unable, as town manager, to explore that because we do not have any such position in the town's network of jobs and job titles. We just have separate positions for collector, treasurer, et cetera. So prior to my being able to explore this with any serious intent, this would have to be considered for creation. The grade is the same pay grade that currently exists for town treasurer, town accountant, town collector, et cetera. So there is no change there. I do want to underscore that we currently do have the position of town collector filled, and filled very successfully. And I am not advocating any change there. But were this to be approved by the, the board, and ultimately by a town meeting, it would allow me to explore the potential of such a consolidation. And were that not to be able to occur, the vacancy in the town treasurer position would need to be explored, because that is a vacancy which is only temporarily being filled by Finance Director Jennifer Petit, again, on a temporary basis and not a permanent basis. So I would be happy to answer any questions the board may have. I do also want to thank Selectman Patterson for his thoughts and insightful clarifications and suggestions on the job, the draft job description that's before the board this evening. And again, that's, that and any other suggestions are much appreciated as we go forward. I am hoping to have the opportunity to explore this further, subject to the position being created. And obviously, we would not, I would not at any point consider having both a town collector and a treasurer collector. That is inconsistent. So it just presumes that this would be a possibility, and if it is not, we would continue to proceed with standalone collector and standalone treasurer positions.
And I would remind everyone that the creation of a position requires a minimum of four votes from the board, just so we know. Doug?
Is there any possibility, instead of having Jennifer having to conserve as treasurer, is the present collector could be promoted to this position, just so we're fulfilling the obligations of having a treasurer? Because I think we can't operate as a town without somebody holding that position. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. And as you've noted, Jennifer's currently in the acting position as town treasurer, and the scenario you suggested is, is among those that we are exploring.
So...
My other question would be whether we want to, in this description, talk about the, they're serving with the website, as to whether that's something that they need to make sure that they have the capabilities of it, or is that just too specific a thing to try to list into a job description?
I, I'm sorry, Selectman, I didn't...
Whether they're going to be, whether we're going to try doing a heavy billing and give payments and...
Well, that's, that's something that is being seriously explored as we speak, irrespective of this job description, so...
That doesn't need to be listed here.
It need not be to have that go forward.
I think this is a step in the right direction. I don't think it's really essential that these two positions be separate. I think many towns have consolidated them, just because they can, and it makes sense. So I, I think it's about time.
Are we creating the position, then?
We are creating, we're creating the position. That's all we're doing tonight, is voting to create the position of treasurer collector. Heather?
No, I just wanted to clarify. This is one of the unique processes in Falmouth's governance system, is that in order for a position to be created, the Board of Selectmen actively has to vote to create the position as part of the classification plan, and town meeting does not vote on the position. It will appear before town meeting, until that vote of the Board of Selectmen affirming for, for in favor of creating the position. So it's a requirement.
I move that we approve the creation of this alternative position of treasurer collector.
Okay, is there a second? Any further discussion?
I guess I just want to clarify, check what Heather's saying. In which town meeting can that, can this position now occur? Not November, can it?
You all place this on the warrant for the November town meeting.
Right, okay, great.
Has this come to the Selectmen previously? This is the first time we've seen them. And has it been a discussion for a while to have this as, rather than having two separate?
This, this has been a matter of some informal discussion since, prior to my arrival as town manager, mostly because there is some commonality to this. It's not universal, but the position of treasurer collector is not unusual. My previous job as town manager, we had a finance director and a treasurer collector. So it is something that is merits exploration, to the extent that it could be pursued. The Selectmen voting positively on this, along with town meeting, would allow it to be explored. Absent that, I really don't have any foundation to stand on to even consider it.
I think it probably has come up previously, but normally you don't do it if there's somebody in each of the positions. You have to wait for, it's better to wait for the opportunity to have one of them be vacant. And I think that probably has something to do with it, too.
Yeah, the, the current vacancy in treasurer has, has really provided an opportunity to, to re-explore this, to reinvestigate it. And Heather reminds me that our towns auditors have also suggested that this is worthy of consideration on more than one occasion. So it is not, not a novel concept, but one that would have to be placed in the realm of possibility to be looked at.
And also, the current treasurer is in their job description that they report to the town manager, not to the finance director, because when that position was created, there was not a finance director.
Correct.
And so now this person would report to the finance director, which is much more allowed, it makes so much more sense than...
Yes.
Having them report to you directly.
Excellent point, Selectman, yes.
What is the grade level for the current treasurer?
The same grade as this one, grade nine.
Okay.
Okay, Sam?
You were asking a question about it being vetted. It was discussed at the last incoming meeting, but I don't want to presume to tell you what their recommendation is at this point.
Okay, so, I've lost track. Do we have a motion?
In a second.
We don't. We have a motion and a second. So we're still discussing?
Yes.
Questions? Yeah.
If I could just ask, Sam, you don't want to disclose the finance. Usually, we have some recommendation if someone has a point. Is it best not to do that ahead of time? Is that the point?
Well, I think the point is that, that the Finance Committee will make its recommendations to town meeting, and that's the body that they're responding to. It's presumptuous for us, for me to say, what their final decision will be before they've actually put it down as part of the warrant.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, just to, just to make sure that weigh in properly, without a four-fifths vote of this board, anything that town meeting or the Finance Committee does is null and void, anyway. I just want to underscore how, how critically important it is, the, the action of this board is, to allow step one to even occur. There is a draft warrant article that this board has approved that would allow town meeting to affirm it, but of course, if this, that's with the presumption that the position would be agreeably created by this board. So that's, that's the concept we're pursuing.
The policy specifically states that any new position must be approved by four members of the board. So that's been in effect for a long, long time.
I don't think it was as much that, as I was just curious about the Finance Committee.
Oh, about the Finance Committee.
And, and, excuse me, you found this to be successful in Framingham?
Yes, very successful.
I worked with it in Plymouth when I worked there, too, so. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Five in favor, unanimous, the motion carries.
Thank you.
That's great. Okay, next, the very last one under this grouping, is to accept a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand grand award from the National Estuaries Program, and Jerry is here. If you wanted to comment on this, this is a very significant grant, and it helps to let everyone know what it's about.
To the congressional delegations of Rhode Island in Massachusetts, a new funding program had been authorized through EPA. It's called the Southern New England Coastal Watership Restoration Management Grants Program. It's primarily geared at Buzzards Bay, because it's a shared watershed between Massachusetts and Rhode Island. We applied and we got a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant to help upgrade the septic tank systems in West Falmouth Harbor. There was a consensus that, you know, give the bay a little bit of push, you get the septic tanks a little closer to the waterbar party, that nitrogen goes in a lot quicker. This will probably remove at least ninety pounds of nitrogen. We were the, we got the highest amount of money. We got the, we were ranked the third highest. The catch is we have to put in-kind services. In other words, my time, when the Water Quality Committee meets in bank, as a whole, we get to charge twenty-seven dollars an hour for every member present. Same with the County Council and things like that. And we feel that area is pretty well established. Bunsell County is going to also help us out with this. So we're excited about it, and hopefully next year, there'll be bigger and better grants. We seem to figure out how to apply for a grant with Sea of Carpolis and the Buzzards Bay Coalition, which most people don't realize, applying for a grant is grantsmanship. You have to read what they're looking for, and explain the grant option and the terms of what they expect. And I think they did a very good job in putting their needs and our needs together so we could get the grant.
So the longer we talk about this right now helps the in-kind...
No, you haven't accepted it yet.
Meter's running.
I, I, I didn't know if I wanted to say you guys are worth twenty-seven dollars an hour individually.
They're a bargain at twenty-seven.
Any other questions?
No.
And that's good, with the, when you said upgrades their septic systems, according to the grant, as I read it, that means they're going to go to alternative nitrogen-removing septic systems, or to eco-till it systems in that area?
Yes, that's, that's the intent. Something that's already approved in the works by the Bunsell County IA Systems.
Madam Chair, could I just make a comment, if I may? I, I want to acknowledge our wastewater superintendent presently here with us, Jerry Potamus, for his continued excellent work in this area, along with consult, consultant Sea of Carpolis, as Jerry's mentioned, and Eric Turkington, and the fine members of the Water Quality Management Committee for their great, great, great leadership in, as Jerry has eloquently stated, not only identifying, but aggressively pursuing these grant opportunities that are consistent with the guidelines and the strategy that the Board of Selectmen have outlined and supported throughout this process. So it's a, it's a great win-win partnership, and it's, it's also identified continued collaboration with the Buzzards Bay Coalition, which we very much welcome and appreciate. So my thanks and compliments to all for the terrific work here.
And again, just for the Finance Committee, my understanding is that this is a grant that will supplement these septic systems, but not require further funding in the future.
That's correct.
I would move acceptance of the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant from the National Estuaries Program with the congratulations, as mentioned, by the town manager.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Jerry.
I just wanted to note, in the same outline, it shows the Kunemesset Farm Foundation also receives sixty-five thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars for, to evaluate the use of biochord in aerated septic tanks, to evaluate its capacity to reduce nitrogen and phosphorus. And that was applied for by the Kunemesset Farm Foundation. And I, you know, I just think that's, it's just another good citizen of Falmouth, and it should be noted.
Great, that's good. I'm glad you mentioned that. We're going to move on to the public hearings, because we have a few public hearings scheduled at seven forty-five. And the first notice is hereby given under chapter one thirty-eight of the general laws as amended, that Elizabeth S. Colt has applied for a change of corporate name for Woods Hole Inn, six Luskum Avenue, Woods Hole, Mass, from Woods Hole Inn LLC to Quixis Hole LLC. And a hearing will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, October twentieth, at seven forty-five PM on the above application.
I would move approval of the change of corporate name from Woods Hole Inn LLC to Quixis Hole LLC.
Second?
Good. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this change? Is there anyone who is opposed to this? Okay. Any questions?
I guess I need to withdraw my hearing, my motion, say, I would move that we close the hearing.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. Now your motion.
Now I'll move, make a motion to approve the change of corporate name from Woods Hole In, LLC to Quixis Hole LLC.
Second.
Okay.
I just want a clarification. It, it doesn't say here that the ownership has changed in terms of percentage interest or anything like that.
No. It's just strictly the change of the corporate name.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. And the second is to approve the request for change of the DBA from Quixis Hole Restaurant to Quixis Hole Taqueria, six Luskum Avenue, Woods Hole. That's just not part... This is just the name of the restaurant. It's not a corporate name, so this isn't a public hearing, but...
It's not, okay.
Do you want to do that now, or just to clean it up?
No, we can just vote the change of the name of the restaurant. It's a public hearing, really, is the corporate name.
Right.
But this is not a public hearing, so we can just approve the change of the name of the restaurant. of the restaurant.
So, move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Unanimous. Okay, back to special events. There are six, and these are recurring events, and they are recommended by the working group.
Couple of comments.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
The first is that the Falmouth Road Race, we held our working group meeting a week or two ago. I wanted to note that the Falmouth Road Race came in, met with us. We reviewed generally their event, and specifically, that the additional events that you saw late last year, one of them will likely not occur this year and is not proposed as part of this event, and that was the Friday evening run. And there's also a run, a women's run, the New Balance Race, which is not going to be proposed by the Falmouth Road Race. If that comes together, they will have a separate application from their running shoe sponsor. I want to make sure it's the right one. So, those, we want to make sure that everything that the Road Race knew about today was covered by their application, and it is. And then, the second note is on the Zuma Half Marathon, which is the next item. Just want to be clear that we approved that event or recommended that event at the same level of participants as last year. And as noted in the material, there are two separate numbers, 1,000 participants and 1,200 participants. The board could specify that you want to limit the number of runners to the same as last year's approval. That is all. Thank you.
Okay. So, we have the Road Race, the Zuma Half Marathon would be the same number of entrances last year, the Vips Feast of Falmouth at Marina Park on Friday, May 25th, the Flag Day, the 5K Run, Moa Grand Avenue Bridge Street on Sunday, June 14th, 2015, the Jingle Jog and Seafaring Santa, Marine Park and the Banshee on Saturday, December 6th, 2014, and the Christmas Parade on Main Street, the Falmouth Mall to the Village Green on Sunday, 12 December 7th, 2014.
I just have one question on both the two road races.
Mm-hmm.
What our application talks about is the number of attendees, and both of them listed as the number of registrants. And I'm just wondering, certainly, that's not the number of people attending, and, well, I'd like to know what the Road Race is actually, number of registrants was. And for those, I'd like no more clarification, is we really have three different numbers. One is registrants, one is actual contestant, you know, people who actually do run, and the third could be the number of attendees, which they have no control over.
I believe that the numbers they give us are the number of runners every year, not the number of attendees. That's just the form.
I understand.
But the actual numbers are those that they register.
Well, again, register and run are different numbers, and that's where my concern is, whether you're giving 15,000 registrants, knowing that some people aren't going to sign up. I would like to make sure that we're actually limiting it to 12,800 registrants, so we're guaranteed we don't have more official runners than that. And the same thing for the Zuma Race, that we're saying, no, the number of people you can register is the number we're putting on the application.
That's right. Well, that has always been the intent, then, from my understanding, it's always been the numbers here are the numbers that they register. And if they all don't show up, they don't show up, but that's all they get to register. Is that your understanding?
That is correct. I think if the board voted to, on both events, to limit the number of registrants to no more registrants than were authorized in last year, for last year's race.
On the application, yeah. I'm good with that. That's what these numbers should be. Okay, so, we have, we have items one through six.
I move approval of these events, the one through six, as presented to us in these applications.
Second.
Okay. Any further, Ducky?
Because the numbers are different on the application, and what we stated, especially for the Zuma Race, is the one, someone will notify them that that limit is 1,000 and not 1,200, as was written.
I will confirm what last year's application was, to make sure that it was 1,000 or less.
This says 1,000 maximum, the application.
And in their handwriting, they say 12,000.
Well, we approve what's on the application, which is 1,000, so that's what we're confirming is 1,000, not 1,200. I know they did suggest that they'd like to go to 1,200, but the committee did not approve that. Is that correct?
And I need to double-check this. With the board's support, I would request that you approve no more registrants than were authorized last year.
I'd like to add that to the motion. That was going to be my comment.
I'm glad to hand that over. We can amend it either way.
All right, well, let's take those separately, then, because, so, let's take the Falmouth Road Race first. And the motion would be to approve the Road Race with the same numbers that were approved last year. That would be the motion.
So, move.
What? No?
I guess I really want to be very clear, that they are not to register more than 12,800, as listed on the application.
But that's the motion.
Okay.
It may differ in wording from the application, but the motion is, the number of registrants should be limited to 12,800.
Right. I mean, I think they registered more than 12,800 this year, and I don't want them doing that again. I want them sticking to the number we've given them, do not register more than 12,800.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Unanimous, that motion carries. And then, the Zuma Half Marathon would be the same numbers as last year. Is that 1,000?
I'm not sure. I'm not positive. I'm noting that that's not clear in the materials here, and I want to make sure that the committee's vote was no more than registered last year.
Right, so, that would be the motion, with the same number as were approved or registered last year, for the Zuma? Zumba, Zuma? Whatever it is. Okay. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
When they receive, do they receive this same application as we look, when you see all the regulations they have to follow? And they sign off on that? And we know that it basically is followed?
Yes, in fact, we've confirmed it. We inspect following the races.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Unanimous. And then, we'll take three, four, five, and six together. So, a motion to approve three, four, five, and six.
I move approval of items three, four, five, and six.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Unanimous. And six.
Do we have a wedding?
Yes. And then, we have a wedding, Elizabeth Budnus, Monarch Beach, Saturday, September 12th, 2015.
Was there a recommendation from the Beach Committee? I don't think I saw one. And I'm also, I don't know whether that's Labor Day weekend or not.
No.
No.
Okay.
No, we don't have a recommendation from the Beach Committee for some reason.
No.
He has signed off on it.
He has?
Okay.
Oh, he's signed off on the form.
Okay, no problem.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, well, that's good. All right, a motion?
I move approval of the Budnus Wedding from Monarch Beach, Saturday, September 12th, 2015.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Unanimous. Got a lot to sign tonight, this year. I hope somebody's keeping track of all these somewhere down there. Good, thanks. All right, next, we want to welcome our Police Chief, Ed Dunn, for his quarterly report. Gee, it seems like it was just yesterday you were here.
It does, time goes by very, very fast.
I guess.
Thank you. Talk about staffing again, Police Department. As you're aware, we're funded for 58. Currently, we have four people attending the Criminal Justice Training Council in Plymouth. They're in their fifth week, and they should be graduating sometime the end of January or the first of February. Once they graduate, they'll start their 15-week field training program. They communicate with us every, all, every weekend. I get an email from one of the four explaining what happened, and everything is going well. Their grades are well, and they're bonding well, so, everything's moving well. We're also in the process, right now, of doing some backgrounds to hire another four. We're hoping, I'm hoping, there's an academy scheduled now for March employment. I'm hoping, there's talk about opening the Randolph Academy in January. And that's my hopes, is to get four of them into the January Academy. Reason being, in January, I am expecting two retirements, so, if we can get these people in the academy and get them trained and get them back, and then, we'll probably be doing some more hiring there. Our dispatches, we did hire to fill, Julia Massey was one of our dispatches, and she got hired as a police officer, so she's currently in the academy, so we had to fill her position. We did hire a fine gentleman, who's done a great job. He's just finishing up his training, and he'll be full-time on the midnight shift, Newton Cardoza. And we just, this past week, finished up some interviews for our 16-hour position, which is a Saturday and Sunday shift, day shift. So, we're hoping to fill that very, very shortly. Over the summer, you may have seen a police officer walking Main Street. We hadn't had police officers walking Main Street for a while. I did it when I first started, and we were fortunate to, I was fortunate to be able to hire as a seasonal officer, Officer Bryant Warner. He's done an outstanding job. He's from Howard. He was sponsored through a police academy from a Downcape department, but when he graduated from that academy, there were no jobs. So, we did hire him, and I kept him on. Usually, we keep him on till Labor Day, but the weather's been so nice and traffic's been so good, I decided to keep him on through October, and I think it's been really well. People, businesses have really accepted and been excited about it, and I believe the community as a whole, he's been a, he's been a good ambassador for the town, as well as the Police Department. And we'll give him the month of November off, but I'll bring him back for the holidays, so we have the businesses open at night around the holidays for the stroll and the lighting and the green and all that, so you'll see him back again.
He's very visible. He's right out there.
Yeah, it's been a good, we tried to get our offices to, you know, park a cruiser, get out and walk, but every time they do, they have to get back to the car and answer a call, so it wasn't working. So, this was, this was something I was, I had some money to do it, and I was able to do it, and it's made a big difference, it really has, so. Our stats for calls, since July 1st to date, self-initiated calls, those are the calls that I maybe remember the offices stopping motor vehicles initiating the calls themselves. We've had 3,763. Compared to 2013, the same time, we had 3,490, so we're up. Dispatch calls, those are the calls that come into the station by phone, looking for service, 5,826, and 2013, we had 5,535. So, we're up about 6% from the same time last year. We've been very busy. Our narcotics, we've had 19 undercover buys, four warrant arrests, nine search warrants, and a GPS warrant. GPS warrant is, we have to get warrants, put a GPS on your vehicle to track your vehicle. We need a warrant for that, so that's what that is. Seizures for motor vehicles, boats, and cash, we seized $40,000 in drug seizure in cash, and four motorcycles and ATVs. Currently, right now, we have three Superior Court indictments, and some of the charges that, some of the narcotics and charges they've been charged with is cocaine, heroin, Percocets, marijuana. There's been some warrant arrests, and typical narcotics that we're purchasing are the OxyContin, cocaine, heroin, and Percocets. Citizens Police Academy we have going on right now also. This is our 14th one. We had, we had a great success last year, we had, after a small hiatus of three or four years. Currently, it's every Wednesday night from 6:30 PM to 10:00. Currently, we have 31 students enrolled. Graduation is expected Wednesday, October 19th. However, if Town Meeting goes to a third night, we're going to push that off to the 20th, because you all will be invited if you wish to come. The coordinator of that is Sergeant James Cummings, and when this group graduates, we would have put through 429 citizens, and they've all got to experience, you know, law enforcement firsthand. It enables residents to learn about the law enforcement agency, the culture, the core values, the overall operations of the department, gives them a really inside view of what the Police Department's all about, so we're really happy about that. Training, Sergeant Cummings, who we promoted earlier in the year, we send all our supervisors off to Command Training School, and that is offered, it's a two-week course at the profit of Roger Williams College. He's just successfully completed the First Line Supervisors Course. Some of the topics they discussed is operational leadership, management principles, problem-solving, labor relations, disciplinary issues, ethical decisions. So, James did a, had a great time. They feed them well there, too, from what I understand. So, he is back at work. When we talk about some of the events that we've had, the Falmouth Road Race, we didn't have any problems last year. We had the same security measures placed. In fact, we had more, and it went really well, especially up in the Heights. We had that all cordoned off where the year before it wasn't, so we plan on doing the same there.
Chief, did you see any difference in the hour change in responses to emergencies? Or, the idea was it was going to be an hour cooler, so we'd have fewer, maybe this more the Fire Department of rescues, but...
Yeah, I think, we didn't, on our end, we didn't notice any difference. The hours are the hours, and we work it. There was a lot more traffic this year. We noticed, because our command center is on Main Street, right at the front of the police station, we moved, we have the Fire Marshal's Command Center. I mean, traffic was at a snail space. We watched a trolley go from in front of the police station to the gas station. You familiar how that is? Probably took them about 20 minutes. There was a lot of traffic, so there was a lot of people. It was a beautiful day, beautiful weekend, so. But as far as the Road Race itself, there were no problems on the, on the police end. And as far as our daily calls that particular day, it was on an average. And that is one of the days that we have canceled off, and everybody has to come to work, including myself. Our Falmouth Police Open House, I know many of you came, it was very successful, so we plan on having that again. The Scarlet Festival, I believe it was successful. I was out there for their opening, and I also went back as a spectator and enjoyed the scallops. It seemed to be a successful event. There were some traffic issues with anything, like in a new event. I have a meeting next week, so we're going to be addressing that. Nothing that we can't get over. I think we're going to handle it similar to where we handle the fairgrounds. It was a learning experience, so, but overall, I believe it was a success. Some of the upcoming events that we're prepared for, the Christmas Parade, of course, we are going to be doing the stuff cruiser again. We might be doing two events. There's talk that we may be doing a food event, 1st of November, and that food will be donated to the service centers of the different organizations that cook dinners for the needy. And then, we'll be doing the stuff cruiser again for the toys, and be donating that to the service center again this year, so, really, you know, really pleased about that. I just want to bring to your attention also that you may have seen, and we're fortunate, you may have seen some sheriff vehicles in town, more than you've normally seen. Sheriff Cummings has, had reached out to me and has, has offered the help of two of his street crime deputies. They were, they were in Barnstable, and they're just being rotated, and has offered them to the town of Falmouth. It's no cost to the town of Falmouth. I have accepted that, that these two personnel, in fact, they'll be starting tomorrow, and they're going to be working, they're going to be under the direction of Captain Brian Reed, and they're going to be working with our specialized services, as well as the patrol unit, to do some proactive policing. We'll be going out doing some warrants, warrant arrests, checking up pawn shops, doing some surveillances and some stings, some proactive to try to stop crime. The Street Crimes Unit in Barnstable has been very successful, on the amount of arrests, the amount of crime that's been stopped, so. the amount of crime that's been stopped, so we look forward to working with them, seeing how all that comes out. But also, we've had some canine cars in town. He's also offered those to us. And they just back up our offices, they're not answering calls per se, but they're backing up our offices. And Falmouth, as you are well aware, is the second largest town on Cape Cod, and we are very busy, as you saw from the stats. So we're constantly calling for canines to assist us in whether it's breaking and entering, search for missing people and things like that. So they're already here now, and they'll be deployed from here to other towns as they're needed. So it's another successful piece that we're trying. And it's thanks to Sheriff Cummings, it's a good partnership that we have, and he offered it and I accept it. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Sue?
Chief, I have to commend you on the interdepartmental work, but you know, with the sheriff and in your unit, I think that's incredibly creative and, you know, the fact that you're both just focused on the work and really, through your leadership and accepting that partnership, it really extends the protection to the, to the people of Falmouth, gives you an opportunity to do creative, as you say, proactive work. So thank you for that, and I just have a quick question. What's the status of Narcan availability, use, training?
Yeah, thank you for asking. We now have, there was an article in the paper a couple weeks ago, the sheriff and the district attorney has supplied Narcan to all police departments. We put our order in. Officer James Rogers, I sent off to instructor school, and he has trained a good portion, if not better than 75% of our officers are trained to use it, and that is ongoing. We're doing it, doing it on shift. It's only about an hour's training, so as the manpower allows, he is training. All our command staff is trained in Narcan, and the offices, the whole department will be trained in it. And I'm glad you brought that up also. The amount of overdoses has dropped a little bit since we had some high-profile arrests. If you remember back, we had a couple of individuals that were arrested, we paired up with the ATF and DEA just recently, and as soon as we took them off the street, it has dropped. I don't believe people have been cured or stopped using heroin. They've just gone somewhere else to get that supply. But that particular supply, the reason we moved on it so fast was when it was tested, it was related to some of the overdose deaths, so we wanted to get them off the street, and we did.
Excellent, thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
No, that was my question, it's not the overdoses.
Great.
Great, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next, we have a petitioner presentation for a town meeting article, for the November town meeting, Article 8. Charlie McCaffrey, guarding land at the West Falmouth Library.
Oh, thank you.
George.
Charlie, you want to use them?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Do you need to keep us up yourself?
No.
You sure?
I've got the big ones.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, it's probably memorized.
I know, I'm sure I have.
Well, the, Glenn Swann, represent, I'm Charles McCaffrey, and Chair of the Building Committee.
Charlie, can you hold, keep the microphone with you?
Right.
Or either hold it or stand.
It pulls out, Charlie.
Okay.
There you go, thanks.
I'm Charles McCaffrey, I'm Chair of the Building Committee of the West Falmouth Library. As many of you know, we have begun an ambitious program to add an addition and to restore the original building and add some other amenities to the library. The main impetus, I'll just brief background, the main impetus for the improvements was the need to improve access and safety. The library was originally built in 1895. It has a very narrow, unsafe staircase to the ground level, which is well-used for programs. There are granite steps, upper slope to enter the library. The need was to create an elevator, an at-grade entrance accessible to the parking lot, to add handicap bathrooms, an archive room. When we looked at the library's building, it was clear that we, to try to incorporate these improvements within the existing structure would compromise the historic character or consume too much program space. So we decided upon a small addition to the library. Only one site made sense. If you look on the site plan, the addition is the blue. The original building is this pink color, a 72 addition is in beige, and this is planned outdoor space. This was the only place that made sense for the addition, because we could have it at grade with the parking lot, so you could walk directly from the parking lot into a new set of stairs or an elevator. It was also important that it be set back and separated from the original building to preserve its historic character. As a result, we have, the addition is very close and in part actually may need to be over our property line, which follows, this is right behind the library. The parking lot, as you know, is town. All of this land is town land, as well as significant area above, which is the park, the ball field, the tennis courts. Our proposal is to exchange land so that we can have the addition approach the property line. Because of the steep slope, we would need to make drainage and stabilization of the slope in order to construct the building. So that's why we've asked for a swap of property. The library, here is the library, owns another parcel that extends all the way up to the top of the slope near where the ball field is. The ball field, I will for town meeting get a plan that shows the ball field, so people understand the relationship. The ball field is about here, the tennis courts are over here. This area is, from here to the very back of the library, is a very steep slope. The land that would be exchanged would be an equal amount of land, town land that's adjacent to the library, for library land that is adjacent to the park, and it would be an equal amount. Also, you can see on this, another reason for the swap is, we propose extensive outdoor space, and it needed to be handicapped accessible, and there's quite a grade drop from the first floor to the, to the grade. And the initial architect's plans had these large wooden ramps to accommodate that, and it was, it wasn't very appealing. And the architect worked and decided that we could provide handicapped accessible ramps that meet ADA requirements by cutting into the slope and landscaping them, so they would be not visually intrusive and actually be quite attractive part of the landscape. But that involves, again, the need for that access would have to be on what is now town land. So it's 8,000 square feet of each parcel. Again, the town land that's immediately adjacent to the library, RIA, for library land that is adjacent to the town park land. And actually, this is very steep slope, this is not as steep a slope, so you're getting better deal. Though neither, at the moment, is, is very usable land. It is parkland, so there may be extra steps that we will have to take to gain state approval should town meeting approve the swap, and then we execute an agreement with the town board on the details. We will need, Town of Puma, we have hired Bob Ahmed to provide us with legal advice on this, and we're pleased with the work he's doing. So that's the basic concept. We are well on our way to raising the 2.9 million that we need for the project. So we hope that we can begin construction sometime next year.
Doug?
That's much of a question, as a observation. When you make this presentation, it may come to surprise to some people, certainly was a surprise to me, that your parking lot is actually a town-owned lot.
Yes.
And I think questions may come up, are we maintaining that?
Yes.
Are we plowing that, are we?
Yes.
And, because every year we have a discussion about how much money does the town give to Woods Hole, and how much money does the town give to West Falmouth, and West Falmouth needs to have the same lot. And it's never been, West Falmouth asking for it. The West Falmouth Library has never been requesting additional amount, but it may come up and say, oh, well, should we be plowing the Woods Hole parking area also since West Falmouth is getting that? I just worry that that...
Well, the Woods Hole...
...may be a distraction from...
Well, the Woods Hole Library, you own the library.
That's true. We don't maintain it, but...
Okay.
The other argument, I think, is very clear, and I think it's, it seems like a good idea for the town's sake, and we'll hopefully support it.
Sue?
Just on, a little bit of an extension on that answer, and I just, I'm a former member, I'm a former vice president of the Board of West Falmouth Library, so I know how much work has gone into this project. But could you just give a minute on the fact of the, you know, public access of the library, the CLAMs relationship, and just a minute on that?
Well, yes, as you know, the library is a community-supported, not municipal, though the municipality, we are grateful for the amount of support we do get.
And Danny Shear's motioned a town meeting to...
Yes, yes.
To make that greater.
And so the library functions, though it's a private library, it functions as part of the town's library system. It's a fully public, free public library, part of the CLAMs systems. People can borrow books at the Falmouth Library, return it to any other book, library in the system, get books from Falmouth. Falmouth residents can get books in any Falmouth Library coming originally from the West Falmouth Library. It's fully integrated into it. For example, our hours are part of the town library system accreditation. The fact that we're open on, say, Thursday evenings is, is used by the Falmouth Library system to document the hours that are provided. We are not only a library in the narrowest sense of the word, but as all libraries are today, a community center that offers this very rich program arrangement. We are particularly proud of our early childhood programs. So there are extensive programs, and they've been growing substantially over the last few years, as has circulation, in part because of the participation in CLAMs.
In vision of working as a library, it also serves as a meeting place for, I think, some of the village associations, and I have to admit, 20 years ago, I had my wedding reception in the library.
Okay. And precinct meetings are held there on a regular basis, other, other meetings. It's one of the, it is a community center for what this part of town, it very much defines the character of West Falmouth, so it's an important historic structure in the town as well.
Becky?
Just off the top of your head, if you know this, for usable space...
Yes.
Talking anything outside, how many square feet?
The addition?
No, of everything that you will have in. Okay, just to be...
It's about 5,000.
About 5,000, okay.
And we're adding about 1,800.
Okay.
Most of that is not usable space, because it's elevators, restrooms, staircase. We will add a quiet reading room and an archive room, which we're very grateful that CPC has awarded us funding for that, and for an extensive effort at restoring the original building.
Okay, okay. My next question is, what's happening to the carriage house?
That's owned by the Quaker Meeting House.
Okay.
It's a separate parcel owned by the Quaker Meeting House.
You work around it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Charlie, could you just recap what this parcel C is going to do for the library and how it will be used?
Yes, well, we will need some of the land for the handicap ramps to the outdoor space from the first floor. The addition will come pretty much close or may even be on a small part of that land. Then we will need to do retaining and drainage improvements on the slope, because the first floor of the addition will be cut into a slope. The slope continues onto library land, and we're cutting in to the slope. So we will need to make drainage improvements and other stabilization on this land. Those will be the main uses of parcel C, the handicapped accessibility over here, and drainage and slope stabilization here.
And so how did you decide that that was the appropriate square footage? Because of...
It's clearly more than is needed, but we thought, you know, it made sense. It was Mike McGrath's recommendation.
Okay.
And just a sideline point to that, what I like about it is it brings the, the library building accessibility even to the playground, which is directly behind it. And we've just had West Falmouth Day, and there's also many times that there's a school in the area and, and other gatherings of children, and they do go from the playground to the library, and I just think that's an important educational element for kids to have.
We will also be, it pretty much occurs de facto, but this is a separate lot, so we'll be combining all of this into one lot, which, right now on the lot, in terms of lot covers, though it's not necessarily a requirement for an educational institution, we're not in compliance with this larger lot. We're in compliance with most area requirements in the zoning.
Is there a walking path or something, a trail that connects the library to the playground?
There is, there is the rudiments of one there.
You need a rope to scale it. I've done many deals, but not...
I think a great project, and who does it, when, under what circumstances, would need to create a really accessible path that would go up from the park, town parking lot to the, to the playground and the park. If, the image I have for that is if, you've seen the path that we did at Highfield down to the Sunken Garden?
Right.
It's a broad one that makes two sweeps. You'd probably need three sweeps to cover the distance of this slope, but it's a similar slope to that, and that could be a very attractive amenity for the park, for, you know, to make better use of the parking lot, for the library, you know, just integrating the recreation area, which is somewhat separate from the center of West Falmouth Harbor. I think it would integrate the uses nicely.
And Rocky Gomes has already opined on this as well. He sort of was, was dreaming along with Charlie and I on, on the whole connection, I think, which is cool.
That would be really nice, to have that connection.
And that needn't be that expensive, you know, in that activity.
So you said the lot is gonna be redrawn as one lot?
Yeah, I think it legally almost becomes one, because, but it, it will be clear that it is one lot.
Not sure.
Thank you very much, Charlie. That was good.
Thanks for all the work on this.
Nice pictures.
Beautiful.
Yeah, really nice.
This is what we visual on, this is the existing, this was the issue. See how the earth would bump the first one.
This is our area for recommendation?
No, we're just, it's a petitioner's article, so we're hearing the petitioner present the article. Now, and then we'll get into the recommendations next. Thank you very much, Charlie. Thank you very much, Charlie. Okay, so next we have the recommendations for the November 14th town meeting. And Heather, do you want to-
Sure, I'll set the stage.
Set the stage, if you would.
What you have before you are the list of articles that the Board of Selectmen will have the main motion on. What we've asked you to focus on tonight is the recommendation. While there are some explanations pending the actual recommendation of the board this evening, we ask that you allow the chairman, Julie and I have worked on polishing the explanations and have the chairman approve those. I just note two separate items before you get into them in detail. The first is that Article 27, which is a land transaction that really has nominal value, Finance Committee may have already taken up. So we'll ask you to go ahead and vote it tonight, but if the Finance Committee has made the recommendation, their recommendation will appear in the warrant.
In the warrant.
We try to give them as much opportunity as possible. But in light that they haven't made a formal recommendation, the selectments will apply. And the other item, I just note that I had an error under the Article 31 for plastic bag provision. I, for some reason, thought that the Solid Waste Advisory Committee's advice was on the bags, but it was on the bottle bill, so you could ignore that. It's just an error. So you'll see there are several articles. I'm happy to walk through one by one.
Yeah, let's go through them one by one. Article six.
This is the land use element. The board, I met with the planning board on that at one of your joint meetings and the recommendation is as printed.
Shall we move them article by article?
If you would.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
I would move Article six, the recommendation would be as printed.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous.
And then the next is the coastal resiliency element, similar explanation and the recommendation is as printed.
I think we all remember that discussion with the planning board.
I would move the recommendation to be as printed.
And I would thank the-
Go ahead.
The planning staff did excellent job with the recommendation, with the explanations.
Yeah. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous.
Now, the next one is a difficult one. It's the only one of the petitioner's articles where we actually have a staff recommendation for you, and that is from Town Council, who's taken a look at this. There are some significant thresholds to cross with the land transaction that you just heard about, including procurement. Any land disposition requires a 30B procurement, which we haven't had an opportunity to engage in. So our recommendation at this time is indefinite postponement, that town meeting shouldn't be asked to vote on the matter until all the preliminary work has been done, including there may be a necessity to petition the legislature for alternate use of Parkland.
Are you aware of that, Charlie?
Yes. Yeah, I'm aware of the need to do that, go through those steps of Parkland, and not aware that we couldn't get-
You want to go, Richard, go to the microphone, please. You're aware of the Parkland requirement from the legislature, get that approval.
Yes. And what were the other steps?
The 30B procurement requirement, any disposition of town-owned land, we have to go through a public notice process, an advertising process, we have to solicit proposals for a specific purpose, it's the statute, these are requirements of-
Ma'am Chair, I just want to be careful that we're not giving Ms. McCaffrey something, an opportunity that we're not giving our other petitioners to.
Well, no, what's happening is there is new information that we all know now that is going to create a recommendation of indefinite postponement, whereas before we thought we were probably going to have maybe a motion to adopt the article.
I think this needs to now be a discussion amongst us.
Yeah, but I'm just asking Charlie if he's aware of this.
Okay, great.
Okay. So, so the issues are, there's a number of steps that still has to be accomplished and you couldn't have a vote at this town meeting without those steps. In other words, it couldn't be conditioned upon their steps. The steps have to come first.
That is correct.
Okay.
And I think you could, if you're not happy with the explanation, we certainly can note if the board's so inclined that the board's, you know, generally in favor of the disposition, but these steps need to occur, that's-
I think that's a much better explanation, that we are supportive of the, of the transfer.
I guess I'd like to move the recommendation indefinite postponement because of the other things that need to go through, otherwise the Board of Selectmen would vote in favor of this.
And we will bring it back at the next town meeting with all these steps accomplished.
That would be my motion, that we do vote in favor of the concept, but recommend indefinite postponement.
Second.
Okay. All right, so that, and you're second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. Okay, Article 22.
This is the taking of a portion of Crane Street in Woods Hole. Recommendation is as printed and it's really just to clarify something that was intended back in 1966 and will allow state funds to be used on that area of town road.
Any questions about that? A motion to approve the recommendation?
Shall we?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. Article 23.
Article 23, I would recommend a minor change to the recommendation, and I'll note it when I get there, that the town votes authorize the Board of Selectmen or any other authorized agency of the town to enter into an agreement with the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op or any other supplier offering net metering power purchase agreements or related agreements as may be necessary to allow the town to participate and benefit from a power purchase agreement. So just change the word sales to purchase. And then I can just note that this isn't about any particular agreement that we have in place, but town meeting authority is required should the town be interested in, at some point, pursuing the purchase of net metering credits.
Yeah, often, there are times when net metering credits are offered to the town and for two reasons, the town hasn't accepted them. One, because we don't have the vehicle to accept them and this creates the vehicle to accept them. And the other reason is that we oftentimes don't want to accept them because we want to create our own net metering credits at some point, like we have with the wind turbines. So, but this is just creating a vehicle that if the town chooses to accept an offer, that we have the capacity to do it. That's all this does. It's kind of like a-
Good explanation.
Right, something like that? Okay.
The school committee was considering that there's an offer made to them, not sure where that stands at this point by the time.
I think the school committee can do it on their own. I don't think they need this, but the town needs this in order to do it. So the school committee, I think, has in the past accepted some net metering credits, haven't they?
If not, they were certainly offered to them.
Right.
And I just might note, the way the language is drafted, it would give the school department authority if they felt they needed additional authority. We phrase this in a way that if the housing authority or any agency of the town were interested, this gives them the authority to do it.
You know, my question is, what agencies are you thinking of beyond Board of Selectmen and the school committee?
That's it.
The housing authority?
Came up as another agency of the town, but-
Is there anybody else that would be?
Well, the library, they're under a separate board.
They're, for those purposes, they're under the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
Trying to cast a fine net, that's all.
Okay, 25, Article 25.
I guess I mean-
Oh, oh, sorry, we knocked up a vote.
When it says any other authorized agency, would we be authorized an agency anyway?
No, by authorized agency, I think we felt, wanted to make sure that the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op is one place to enter into those agreements. They're generally a broker, but there may be, you can buy direct from a particular supplier.
No, I meant of the town.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I understand any other supplier, but to authorize the Board of Selectmen or any other authorized agency of the town, who would authorize the other agency? Would that still be us to authorize them or what makes them authorized?
Town meeting.
So the town meeting would authorize them to do so or just if they were an agency that existed through the authority of the town meeting, could they go and do this on their own?
Only if they had, if they had the authority of the town to do it. So really it would be limited to the Board of Selectmen and the school committee.
Okay. I just think we may end up getting some concern about that vagueness since the Board of, the school committee already can do it on their own.
We can strike that if you prefer.
I just don't want to have it not pass because people are concerned about, does the Energy Committee-
Oh.
-as an authorized board, could they go off and do this?
They don't have the authority to engage in the contract.
Okay.
So it's a contracting authority. We could add the word contracting authority.
Yeah, that might be the best. Or any other authorized-
Contracting authority of the town.
Contracting authority.
I don't need to be a nitpicker.
No, it's fine, it's fine.
And is that contracting authority authorized by the Board of Selectmen?
Could be town meeting.
Really the town manager, is it? There's nobody else that signs contracts.
Okay.
So that means that now Julian can enter until he sees-
Somehow I think he'll come see you first.
Gently noted, yeah. But I, you know, if it really is nobody else that's out there, I think we might be cleaner just to leave it as us, as the Board of Selectmen.
It's fine, we can strike that.
And the explanation, we could say, we have not included the school committee because they already have the authority to do so.
I think we're not getting into too many words there.
If it comes up, we can say that.
I can't assert that that is true, I don't represent the school committee, but I'm assuming that's correct. I don't know. But if they desire, if they need, they determine that they desire and need authority, they can come back and get that.
So I'd recommend this recommendation, striking the lines from, striking or any other authorized agency of the town.
Okay. All right, so the marshal will, well, the marshal will come with that change.
Right.
Okay, a second. Any other, just further, just, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. Good. Article 25, donation of a parcel of land off Springbars Road.
Right, 25. The recommendation is indefinite postponement. While they, we don't expect any problems with this particular transaction, a signed agreement is not in place at this time and the board will make a motion on the floor of town meeting.
Do we have to make our recommendation on this one by tonight for the printing? Is the printing this Friday?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. I just, I used to get very annoyed as a town meeting member when the Board of Selectmen couldn't get their act together and have a recommendation in the book.
Now you are all.
Well, the way the wastewater project is going, it is what it is.
Doug, explain that to me again. What, what's your issue with this?
I would almost prefer to say, our recommendation is as printed and if we have to change our recommendation, we'll draw that recommendation because we don't have a signed agreement.
Can we recommend it pending or subject to the agreement being signed by, before town meeting?
Well, we could just simply accept that we know now that we don't have a reason to do it.
No, that, this one, yes, you do have a reason.
We do have, okay.
Well, you could say as printed, subject to receipt of a signed agreement.
And then, and then if we, at town meeting, we could say-
Make our major motion.
We have to change the recommendation because of whatever happened and then we change the recommendation to-
I guess, I think that's cleaner to say, we are still supportive of Article 25, we're moving forward with it. We have to tweak the language to make it fit what the signed agreement is. Yeah, just subject to the signed agreement.
So the recommendation is as printed.
As printed, subject to the receipt of a signed agreement.
Exactly.
Subject to receipt of signed agreement. Okay?
Good.
And then you can change the explanation.
We'll do that.
Okay, Article 26. Oh, do we have to vote?
Careful. So I make that motion as printed, subject to a signed agreement.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. Article 26.
This, if Article 25 is successful, 26 is not necessary, therefore we're recommending indefinite postponement.
Indefinite postponement.
Yep. Move indefinite postponement as our recommendation for Article 26.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. 27.
Very long recommendation. It is drafted by Town Council. If you'd like me to, I will read it, but I don't know that that's necessary.
I don't think you need to read it.
It's a great property, we've been working for, I think you're all aware of it.
Right.
The transaction with the 300 Committee.
This has been in the works for a very long time.
Very long time, wonderful family. The property is fully restricted with only some tenant uses for the current owner. Those uses expire with the transaction to the 300 Committee and this ensures that a 500-foot buffer, which currently exists, remains in town ownership for public water supply purposes during long time.
Move our-
With a little squibner. Under the explanation on the third line, it's open space.
Yeah, delete DS.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, delete DS.
Delete DS, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And the Finance Committee may have a motion on this, and not us, but we'll make a motion in case they don't.
Right, this is contingent upon the Finance Committee's recommendation or, we won't know the Finance Committee's recommendation until after the printing of their-
Right.
We're just belts and suspenders. If the Finance Committee has not really made a recommendation, the Board of Selectmen will be here.
Great.
Okay, so.
I move Article 27, should property recommendation has been given to us here.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. Article 28. This is the petition article of changing the polling locations back to what they were. So do we want to make any comments on it or do we, yeah?
Just, I'm sorry, but just a question, when it says refer to school committee-
Meaning, should we refer this recommend, refer this to the school committee for a recommendation from them as opposed to us making a recommendation?
We, by charter, have to-
Huh?
By charter, we have to make a recommendation on our petition articles.
And it could be to refer to the school committee.
That was really the, not my question, whose jurisdiction is it?
It's the school committee's jurisdiction. Isn't it? No.
You have to affirm, you had to affirm their acts, action, to move the polling places, as you recall.
Right.
And we won't know their recommendation before, just too late.
This is an article asking the town to ask the school committee to reconsider.
That's right.
Yeah, the article asks the school committee to reconsider.
The real school committee, I don't think is going to reconsider beforehand. Maybe they will, but-
There's only one or two new board members, so it's effectively the same board, really.
Do you want to hear the article?
Yeah, why don't you read the article?
To see if the town will vote to ask the school committee to rescind their vote, rescind their vote to disallow voting at elementary schools.
My recommendation would be to recommend it as printed.
I agree with them. I don't see any problem with any aborting in that and it was the school committee that voted it and they, they're asking them to rescind their vote.
No. Okay, so you have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. Article 29. This is another petition article requesting that the Town Council provide a report, a litigation report, at town meeting. Now, the council provides a litigation report in the annual report, the written annual report of the town, but normally does not make that report at town meeting, makes it in the annual report.
I don't think town meeting is the right place to be making that litigation report.
I agree.
Okay.
And I also think, I mean, some of this is not very possible, for example, when you have settlement discussions, oftentimes the primary prefix to the settlement is that there be confidentiality and I don't think this article really addresses that. So I don't even know that that would be, you know, working in the real world.
So, what is your-
So is your point of what you were saying is the report is already available?
In the annual report. It's written in the annual report.
Okay, and so there, what is being asked to happen already happened?
It's written in the annual report. This is asking the council to make this report verbally at town meeting.
And I think we have three reasons why I'd recommend against it. One is it's in the town report, two, I don't think town meeting is the right place for it, and three, there are some things there being asked that legally we can't do because of litigation in settlements.
Correct.
So you could make the recommendation of indefinite postponement.
The strongest part of this is there are parts of it that we cannot do.
Even, even in the annual report.
Right.
So I would move that through, I would move indefinite postponement to be our recommendation for Article 29.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. White Pine Way, there is the email there. The, normally, first of all, we have to be clear about the Mass General Law, which says that there can be no public funds expended on private property, and this is a private road. So we cannot, by law, do any work on a private road. So we have two ways of doing that. We have the, the road program that the selectmen constituted back in the 90s where we had money into a fund, and people would then request the road improvement under the Betterment. And that's been going on for, I don't know, 14 years, something like that. Although now, the, the funding isn't as great as it was when we first started. But we still do it. We just did, if you remember, the Schumett Pond area. What is, what is that? Was it a Schumett Pond?
Yeah, we've done Redlands Regis, Redlands, Redlands Road or Regis Road, which is the Schumett Valley.
A Schumett Valley.
Elizabeth Jean Drive is up. That will be done in the near future, not too distant future.
So we could, the, the individual could be referred to the Betterment. The other way that you can get your road improved is to create a private road district. And the way you do that is four people, four property owners on the road, make an application to the town clerk to create a private road district. And then they create it. It's a legal document, it's no big deal. In fact, Ransom Road was done under a private road district. And what happens is that as long as four people on the road petition, then they can go out, hire the contractor, they can, and then they have to pay for it. And even if you disagree with it, you still have to pay for the reconstruction of the road. If you don't, there's a lien on your property. So everybody has to pay. That's another way of getting a road done if you don't want to wait for the road program.
Is that what Highfield Drive did?
Highfield Drive did. They didn't actually go to the degree of creating a private road district, but what they did was, they went around and talked to every single abutter, including the town, because the town's a major abutter on Highfield Drive. The town agreed to do the engineering work, you know, in kind, and all the other abutters to Highfield Drive agreed to pay their share of the cost of the road. So they have to create the private road district.
So that's a third option.
They did it through an agreement. That's another option. If they wanted to, somebody wanted to get all the parties together, and they go out and get their own bids, and, and they pay for it themselves, they can do that also.
I went over and took a look at White Pine.
Bad shape.
And there, I would say 60% is paved and 40% isn't. And of the 40% that is not, it's five homes, three on one side, two on the other, and then there might be eight homes on the paved. So let's follow your explanation of how you do this, of what is paved, that you are only paying for what is the dirt part of the road? Or are you paying for all of White Pine?
Depends on what they want to do, what the neighbors want, if they want to do...
All right, let's say that, that the part that is paved is in good shape.
Mm-hmm.
So...
It would be the four people then, or five people that abut the dirt part of the road.
Five people on the dirt part.
That's what they would do, is get together, and they have these different avenues that they could use to do it.
Okay.
Otherwise, they, they get on the list, which they are not on the list now, for the Betterment, and they could do it as a Betterment. So I think my suggestion is we recommend indefinite postponement, and then recommend that they get together and follow one of those options that are available to them.
And then our explanation, will this the three different options?
Well, I don't know. Yeah, could. It could, private road district, or the road Betterment program, or, or just simply the parties work together and hire their own contractor and split the costs.
And instead, instead of what they're asking or suggesting, our recommendation is, our explanation is they pursue one of those three options.
Right, because by law, we cannot do work on a private road unless it falls into one of those categories. Okay?
I would move indefinite postponement with the explanation written in by our chair.
Okay. And then Article 31. This is actually...
Oh, a second.
Need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. Unanimous. Article 31, this is a ballot question. This is not the solid work advisory. Their recommendation is for the ballot question. It's not for the plastic bag prohibition. So we should deal with the plastic bag prohibition, which is a ballot question. Now, normally, we do not, do we ever take a position on ballot questions?
No, this is an error.
This is a petition one.
It's a petition.
Elimination of plastic bags.
And it's local, it's not.
So you would take a position on that.
Local.
This is a local bylaw.
Oh, this is the local bylaw. Oh, okay.
The ballot one is the bottom bill.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Yes, so we would take a position on this. So what is our recommendation? What is your pleasure?
I, I would recommend, I thought the proponent was very, you know, did a lot of footwork and really accommodated both the, you know, commercial aspects and the private citizens and, and, you know, I, I like the fact that Falmouth tends to be on the cutting edge or in the forefront of a lot of, you know, climate concerns, you know, green concerns, so I, I'm definitely for it.
I actually thought the period of 18 months as a phase-in system was a very useful piece to have to it. Certainly, that's enough time for any businesses who purchase plastic bags to use up what they have, so it's not something that they're going to have something in their stock that they have to abandon, the money they've already paid for. So I would be comfortable with it for supporting this by law.
Okay, that's a second. Any discussion?
Well, Mike, California just passed a regulation similar to this, so, I mean, we're not going to be the first ones. We have a whole state.
And Providence County did, too.
I think Providence.
Yeah, I think we should do.
But I think this is a legitimate way to go, and I think we all recognize how much of these bags end up being littered on roads, hanging in trees, and blowing off into our water, sometimes doing damage to wildlife. I'm, I'm in favor of it.
It's a responsible thing to do. Okay, all those in favor, oh, what is our motion going to be to, we support?
As printed.
Or we recommend it as printed?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. That's great.
Did you need a motion and a second? Did we get that?
Yeah, we got that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Do we need an explanation in our town, and you'll work on that?
An explanation?
Yeah, I took some notes.
We'll work on it.
Heather will work on that. Heather is the chief explainer.
I have, I have a motion.
That's right. Okay, selectmen's reports. Anyone have any reports they'd like to make?
I can, if you want. You want me to?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. I've attended the finance committees on the October 7th and the 14th. They've been looking through all those articles to make their recommendations. I gave a presentation to, on the Falmouth, on Falmouth Governance to the newcomers' current events group at their request. I attended the October 9th Special Events Working Group that Heather hosted, and you've seen all the recommendations, and we've just voted all of those. It was very well done. I should add as an, as an observation. I've also attended the Community Preservation Committee meeting on the 9th, and they were looking back through some of their paperwork, memorands of understanding with the various project leaders or groups, sponsoring groups. That's primarily that was a major discussion in that meeting. Also attended the last school committee meeting. A couple of notable items there is that the new T-ticket boiler has come online, and that's an ESCO project, and I think I would like at some point in the near future to get a status report on those ESCO projects and where they all stand.
That's a very good idea.
This is, this is one example of where our investment is actually being put to work right now, and just in time for winter. But I think it's also heating hot water, but I'm not sure about that. Anyway, I think a good investment. The Lawrence Windows, that process is still going through, the Massachusetts School Building Assistance Program. We should hope to qualify for a 38% subsidy. I know that project manager and consultant have been assigned to that project in support of the school's application. The Morris Pond Playground is moving along. It's under construction by the DPDW, I think, for the most part. I keep driving by it and seeing progress. That's a neat thing that's going on. And then the last thing under the school committee is that they reported on the very strong MCAS results that our students achieved in this last go-round in, in the spring of last year. We have a level-one high school and level-one junior high, it's Lawrence, and all of our other schools are level-two. We're really an outstanding school system, and I think it shows how well-invested our money is in the education program here in high school at Falmouth, and how proud we can be of, of the accomplishment of our children. I attended the training program, many of us went, on open meeting law, conflict of interest in public records. And then I also attended a Conservation Commission hearing, a meeting, which included hearings on the 15th. And then last, the meeting of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation today, where they reviewed the evaluation of their options for redesigning the Route 28A-151 as intersection.
Okay. Sue?
I thought it might be good to note, I mean, we are meeting with a lot of subcommittees coming up, and just to kind of remind the chairs and members what kind of ideas they have about their priorities, moving their projects board, whether, you know, they have ideas for additional board members if they need them, or ideas for consolidating or working with other boards of the town, so I'm looking forward to that. The Energy Subcommittee had the Cape Cod, what's the light people, what's...
Cape Light Conference.
Cape Light Conference, thank you, do a really great presentation about opportunities that are available to both consumers and businesses, the various programs where they come into an assessment of your home. I have one myself done a few years ago, and it's timely. I'm scheduling another one. There are a lot of programs where you can get either tax credits or assistance, and always good advice, and right now, on, through the end of October, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, there's a light packet that's available at the Cape Cod Mall, which I bought. It's for $10, and you get two desk lamps and a bunch of really efficient bulbs, so it was, it was great information. And, you know, that, we encouraged her to do an FC TV spot so that that could get out to more consumers, so that's something that everyone should take some advantage of. And with respect to the EDIC, there was a lot of positive discussion about the, the recent housing report that was done, and, you know, the fact that I, I know the chair is, is putting together some ideas on, on moving, taking some action and getting some input on that report. And the, you know, the, really the idea about how important housing is for jobs and for attracting younger people and really balancing the demographic in Falmouth, which I think we've all agreed in the report show that we need for sustainability going forward. So that, in terms locally, a little broader, the Cape Cod Commission's Beach Access Committee is really doing some excellent work on cooperative and creative strategies to maintain our beaches, which are of really fundamental economic importance to the Cape, and that the group of people, it's, it's various experts and selectmen from all over the Cape, and, you know, they have a lot of varied experience, and, and it's about working together and expediting projects. And it's really amazing that the state is so cooperative with that, and also working when necessary with the federal agencies. So it's, it's a great example of, you know, kind of expediting the needs for the local communities. So that's, all of that good stuff is going on.
Becky?
I think that, I just wanted to make a comment about the wall that's being built in front of Gus Cante, and I think it's going to be most impressive, and I'm glad to see that that has started. And I, whatever the material is that they're choosing for that wall, I think will hold a lot of children. I think that's, the only other thing was that I went to a solid waste meeting, and the vice chair, Jenny Gregg, gave a fabulous report about how to get rid of our solid waste. And there's a lot of it today that cannot be burned and can't be buried. So there are some new devices that are available in Westport that she gave an excellent report. And I would like to invite her and all of you here, her discussion about what do you do with solid waste that you cannot eliminate through burying or burning or anything else? So if we want to think about that at, excuse me, I'll be more.
That's great. No, keep talking. You're at the floor.
Yeah, no, that's it.
That's it?
That's it.
I've been meeting with the group that's evaluating the proposals for the golf course, and we're meeting again tomorrow to interview candidates for the position. Have a run in the golf course.
I have been asked to be a member of the Canal Working Group. This is a group of, I don't know who else is on it besides me. I'll find out on the 29th. This is the, a group that's going to take a look at whether we build a new bridge, or whether we add to the bridges, or whether we build a tunnel, or whether we just forget the whole thing. So it'll be very interesting to see how this works out. And I thought about it, and I thought, somebody really needs to, you know, represent Falmouth on this, because we do have a big stake in how people go back and forth to the Cape.
Thank you for doing that.
Well, I'll let you know how, believe me. I'll be reporting on it. I'll probably need input. So this is the DOT, Department of Transportation Committee.
Right. Okay, town managers' report.
Thank you, ma'am and chair. Happy to report the, the board will recall your follow-up authorization of submission of our wastewater management plan to the Department of Environmental Protection was hastily approved and received an expedited approval, as the board has learned, and we're very gratified for that. I think it's further indication of the great quality of the, of the breakthrough work being done here in wastewater management. So I want to thank everyone involved with that, including the board, allowing that to move forward expeditiously. And I, I certainly join in the pleasure of seeing the landscape improvements, as selectman Moffitt has noted, to Gus Cante Center. Those will also include, of course, some access, an access enhancement with a, an exit to the rear to Dillingham for future events that would be occurring there beginning next year, to give the board that option for exciting possibilities at that location as well. And also, I note that with some pleasure that the Halloween scarecrows have begun to make their annual appearance on downtown light poles, certainly a sign of the season, and I'm really taken with how many people come by, take photographs of those, pose next to some of them. Really brings in an amazing, amazingly large group of people just to observe and enjoy and share in that really remarkable process that's become an annual event, so my compliments.
I understand there is a very possible vote as to which is your favorite. Does anyone know where you go and vote your preference on the scarecrows?
Good question. I'm guessing...
They have a Village Association.
Is it Chamber of Commerce or the Village?
Probably the Chamber.
Yeah, that would be my guess.
What a nice addition to the council. Not that it required.
It is great.
Fire department one as well.
Well, I want to remind everyone that next Monday, we're having the meeting with the committee chairs, so if any of you have any suggestions that you want to be included, you can email me or Julian, and you'll try to incorporate them into our discussion topics for next week.
And that's at the Herman Room in the library?
Yeah, Herman Room in the library. It's 7:00 PM.
Will we have time for other business also, or are we...
It depends if we have any business, yes, we'll do.
I don't think there's any business.
I have one more quick thing to mention, the, the Oyster Symposium.
Oh, festivals next Monday. I mean, Sunday.
It's Sunday at Seacrest at 5:00, so people should, like, check out the, I think it's oystersymposium.org, if you do a search.
And it's a what time? And it's a what time?
I believe it's 5:00 o'clock.
Five to seven, I think, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that'll be interesting, because this is like the prelude to the big symposium in 2015.
Exactly.
Which will be probably the same time of year, which is a collaboration between Woods Hole, NOAA, Marine Sciences, and the Oyster people. So you have the Wellfleet group and the Falmouth-Woods Hole group.
And we'll get a taste of it coming up soon.
That's right, we will. And I think the president of the society, who is Japanese, I forget his name, he's going to be the speaker on Sunday at this event, and so it'll be kind of interesting. This is the first time this symposium, not this party, but the symposium next year, will have been held in the United States. It's always been, I think, in Asia. So this is the very first time, and they, they selected Cape Cod, imagine that.
And Falmouth.
Falmouth, yeah. Well, that's good. Anything else? There's no other business? Some motions are adjourned?
Move adjourned, yeah.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Off we go.